Welcome, everyone. We're going to go ahead and start the pre-meeting while everybody's filing in. So tonight we have Councilman Kimna with the prayer. I'll call the meeting, pre-meeting to order here. And then we have, I believe, item A, they are coming at different times. Is that correct, Emily? The next meeting. So miscellaneous item four A will be at the next meeting, but we are going to have introduction of a new police officer tonight. So Lieutenant Williams will, will put that in that slot instead. So I will likely have a motion to adopt the agenda, kind of making a little swap there. We do have item B, the Bike Month. And looking down at going to number seven, we do have a couple of presentations there. So we have our audit presentation. And then we also have Chris Lickel from Parks to make those two presentations. Any questions on any of those for now? And then we'll have our regular announcements. Consent agenda, questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I, I brief Sunny, I'm going to pull item D off. I just have a couple of questions. I'm still getting questions from the public. So I just want to make sure that I'm representing it. I think it's as we asked, I just want to make sure that I'm set on it.
Okay, so when we get to that item, we'll call on you, okay? And then item 12, Bill's introduced number four, we'll have Division Chief Blomberg. You want to give us just a quick summary?
Yes, ma'am. This agreement will allow, will allow the city fire department to give and receive aid to our neighboring fire departments for dispatched structured fires only.
Any questions? All right, thank you. And then number five, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a two-part zoning action brought to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding 101 Jackson Street. Basically, it's a rezoning to PUD, Planned Unit Development, from the mixed use up on Capitol Avenue to permit a fifth unit in a fourplex up there for transformational housing. So it's a rezoning and also to approve a preliminary PUD plan, which would include a parking lot on the adjoining lot that they are requiring to. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, and number six, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a contract with Crafton Toll out of Arkansas for a consulting activity for the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization to conduct an active transportation plan, which would update three or four plans here in the mid-Missouri area. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. And then Bill's pending, number one, Mr. Marash.
Yeah, thank you. This, this is a vacation of some sewer easements on Central Electric Power Co-ops property. They have a big expansion they've built there and moved some sewer lines around, and this would vacate the old easements.
Any questions? Number two, Mr. Marash?
Kind of similar deal. The, there's some residential how, group, group type housing in this area. They also expanded and so they had to do some movement of sewers and this would vacate those easements.
Any questions? Number three, Mr. Marash?
Yeah, this is a engineering agreement for Ohio Street Bridge and obviously I sent out a kind of a lengthy email with some additional information about it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I, I just talked to Mr. Marash and I've talked to several other council members. I mean, staff provided exactly what the Public Works Committee asked, but we've got a couple of questions. So I think we're going to put it on the informal. So we have a little bit more time to deliberate on it before we move forward. And we're looking for a couple of additional costs.
Okay, sounds good.
Little bit, little bit more time to maneuver it.
Okay. And nothing on the informal until then, of course. Resolution number one, Mr. Mollman.
Yeah, so this, this resolution approves a successor directors to the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District. So under that agreement, the property owners are responsible for naming their board of directors, with the exception of one spot that is reserved for a city appointment with the recent retirement of Margie Miller as Finance Director. New interim Finance Director Sheila Perry will be replacing Ms. Miller on the board.
Okay, any questions? All right, and resolution number two, Mr. Mollman?
Similar to the previous one, but under this one, it's for the MSP Community Improvement District. Once again, Ms. Perry will be replacing Ms. Miller and Commissioner of Administration Ken Zellers, Deputy Commissioner of Administration Caroline Coulter will be replacing the state representatives on that board.
Okay, any questions? And resolution number three. And we don't have a staff person, so I would assume this sponsor, Councilman Spencer? Any questions? Okay, and item 18, new business, Mr. Kroll?
This is a action requested by Councilmember Spencer, discussed at the Administration Committee meeting. Administration Committee meeting suggested it come to the City Council, essentially conducting an organizational review of city departments.
Any questions? And we do have a closed session, so any questions before we adjourn the pre-meeting? Okay, with that, I will call the meeting adjourned. We still have about five minutes. It's about 5:54, so six o'clock we will call the meeting to order. So, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Before we start the meeting, we will have a prayer from Councilman Kimna, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray that we seek you for us and let us act based upon your wisdom. Please guide us, Lord. Place this meeting in your hands, place our hearts and our minds in your hands, so that you may direct us. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, to the states, to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, May 2nd, 2022 City Council meeting. This is also available virtually with the link on the website, JeffersonCityMo.gov on the agenda, along with call-in information. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, followed by roll call.
Deacon? Fitzwater?
Present.
Hensley?
Present.
Kimna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the change of item four A, miscellaneous agenda item. Item four A will be here at the next City Council meeting, and instead we will be introducing a new police officer during that time. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So item four A, I will invite Lieutenant Williams to the podium now to introduce our new police officer introduction.
Madam Mayor and Council, we would like to introduce Mitch Roslin, a local Jefferson City that just completed the academy on the 22nd of April. He has just started his field training and he is happy to hit the ground running. Mitch graduated from Jeff City High School in 2019, and he was one of the younger people in the academy. He, it shows. He's still young, but he's very happy to be a part of our community and stay here and become a police officer. We talked earlier. He said he didn't want to talk and then he did want to talk, so I'm going to give him the opportunity.
Wonderful, welcome.
Supposed to say, but.
Well, we're glad to have you on board and tell us maybe a little bit about yourself.
So I'm from Jeff City, like you said. Went to Jeff City High School. I went to school at State Tech. And then I got hired here and went to LETI.
Wonderful. Well, we're very glad to have you on board and it's nice to be able to officially get to welcome you to Jefferson City Police Department.
Thank you. And to clear up, LETI is the Law Enforcement Training Institute. It's located in Columbia. We have a student that started today as well, so we're still hiring. We're still trying to get good quality people to take care of our community. And so if you're interested, you can go to the website. We are still taking applications.
Right. Well, thank you and congratulations to you, Officer Roslin, and we're glad to have you. I know that you're actually on duty tonight. So we appreciate you taking the time to come here and have this formal introduction, and we really appreciate you dedicating yourself to the service of Jefferson City Police Department and helping others in the community. So thank you for that. And we'd like to invite you forward. We'll get, of course, get a picture here officially so that we can recognize you. And we'll have council come up here too, so that we can.
I'd also like to get his training officer to come up as well.
Yes.
Charlie Sayong is another officer. He is, his field training officer. So he's responsible for Mitch for the next 18 weeks.
And item two, we have Bike Month proclamation that we are going to present. So we have several here in attendance I'm very excited for. So I would like to invite everybody who's here for Bike Month Celebration Proclamation to come forward. So you can all file in behind Katrina and Kevin and.
We actually have a lot of people here if you all want to come up.
Well, this is exciting. I love seeing council chambers filled for this occasion tonight. So while everybody is filing forward, I do have a proclamation, so I'll read that as everybody is, is coming up. And this says, whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of the city of Jefferson's scenic beauty. And whereas throughout the month of May, residents of the city of Jefferson and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, community bike rides, or simply getting out and enjoying a ride. Whereas the roads and trail systems in and around the capital city attract bicyclists all year long, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. And whereas the city of Jefferson, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, JC Parks, and other local organizations will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2022. And whereas local groups and businesses promote bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy our local restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions. And whereas the city of Jefferson is recognized as a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health and well-being, encourages connectivity and inclusivity, and enhances quality of life, growing the economy of the city of Jefferson. And whereas Missouri's Katy Trail attracts hundreds of thousands of bicyclists each year from all 50 states, from all across the globe, providing both economic and health benefits to citizens of the capital area and the state of Missouri. And whereas the Capital Area Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, City of Jefferson Area Greenway Master Plan, and other city and regional plans support and promote bicycle-friendly transportation, recreation, and development. Now therefore I carry turge and mayor of the city of Jefferson, do hereby recognize the month of May 2022 as National Bike Month. And furthermore, the week of May 16th through 20th as National Bike to Work Week. And all who support bicycling are urged to participate in the events planned. And all road users are urged to share the road safely with bicyclists. So we're happy to promote National Bike Month. So we'd like Ms. Williams to give us some information. Then thank you.
So we have a lot of people in our community for which biking is very important to them, not only for recreation, but also as a form of transportation. And so we invited folks who support that to come tonight. And so we have a really big group. We are about to kick off a bike ped plan, planning activity. It's our active transportation plan. That's going to start this month after contracts are approved. And then I'm going to let Kevin Schwartz from Parks say a few words about activities that are going on.
Thanks, Katrina. Hi, my name is Kevin Schwartz and I'm here to represent JC Parks and share some of the bike-related initiatives we currently offer. The largest cycling-related program we currently offer is our community bike rides. There are many obvious reasons to participate in our community bike rides, but if I had to mention a few, they would be education about active transportation infrastructure improvements, safe bike, safe cycling practices and road etiquette, bike-friendly routes around Jefferson City, and the obvious mental and physical health benefits associated with active transportation. Our next rides that we have planned is actually tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the Clay Street Bike Plaza. So if you don't have anything going on tomorrow evening, we'd love for you to be able to join us. And the following community bike ride after that is going to be May 22nd at, that is a Sunday at 1:30. So some of the other programs that we also offer are professional mountain bike clinics from Wheels Up out of St. Louis. It's a unique opportunity where they come down to Jefferson City and bring these large inflatable airbags for people to jump their bikes off of and to land on without the consequences of hitting the ground. So that's, it's, it's kind of a cool deal. And then, of course, we also offer the Tall Oak Mountain Bike Challenge, which is a four-hour continuous mountain bike race out at Binder Park. So I encourage everyone here to sign up, and if you need to get ahold of me of any other questions, feel free. But at JC Parks, those are just a few examples of the activities that we offer. And again, my name's Kevin. If anybody has any questions about. And, um, again, my name's Kevin and if anybody has any questions about mountain biking or any of the activities that we have in outdoor recreation, please reach out. Thank you.
Sure, welcome.
Joey Gerbus, um, I'm a parent and a coach for the Central Missouri Lumberjacks, which is a team for the Nike Organization, which is National Inter-Scholastic, uh, Cycling Association. Well, we have a Central Missouri team. The state championship this year was at Binder Park, which we teamed up with Parks. I think we put on a good race. Um, I think as a parent, one thing we want to do with our children is to get them outdoors, get them active and to keep them moving. Uh, me, I have two children on the team now that has far exceeded what I wanted to do with them and get them out there and see the community, help out the community and, uh, build their, um, physical well-being as well. So I, I appreciate the partnership with the Parks and the availability for the different spots here in town to ride and hope to keep that going.
Wonderful.
I'm Jim Coleman, I'm one of the co-leaders of the community bike rides. I usually bring in the tail end of the group. Uh, but basically this has been really great for the community. We've noticed that the, we've had more and more people enjoy the rides. We try to vary the times so that we can get as many people as possible. Not everybody can make a Saturday, so we have some on Sunday. We started the midweek rides for people who have maybe have weekend jobs. But anyway, community's been very supportive and if you have a bicycle, makes no difference whether it's got training wheels or 27, 28, 29 gears. Uh, come on out and have some fun. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you all. Any other bike announcements in the group there? Do you have any council questions? Well, I appreciate you all being here and the dedication to come here tonight as we celebrate National Bike Month. And, uh, I have absolutely loved the community bike rides that are held. I know I, on a whim, I bought a bike a couple of years ago the night before a ride just so that I could participate. And I haven't looked back ever since and it literally is like riding a bike, even though I hadn't ridden one since, uh, grade school. But, uh, and then Kenny taught me how to change gears and then that was really life-changing, so. I was actually on the midnight bike ride about 2:00 in the morning coming, going down Edgewood and he said, no, you, you need to learn how to change gears while you're riding. So we did that and it has been the most fun, but every route is different. There's always a new discovery out there and seeing the bike from that viewpoint, like from the road, uh, it's not like being in a car and being surrounded by a car. You can actually enjoy the scenery and it gives you a whole new perspective. And, uh, we ride for fun and recreation. There are some people that ride as their mode of transportation. There's so many things that bikes are important for in our community and I think it's great that we can celebrate that. But there's so much in Jefferson City especially to enjoy when it comes to bikes. So we appreciate all of you, uh, being a part of this. And I have a special proclamation and, uh, that I will take a picture of everyone with, so we're gonna invite everyone to come up. But before we do, maybe we could just have everybody say their name into the microphone as they come forward. And then we'll have everybody line up here. And Katrina has brought her bike so that we can get a prop and get a picture with that in our picture as well. So we're just gonna have a fun night. So, um, if y'all want to come forward one at a time and just give us your name, we're really glad to have you all here tonight.
Jackson Gerbus.
Um, Jameson Gerbus.
Orbin Cordy.
Hi, I'm Allison Skinner.
Shane Ivy.
Stoney Cranmer.
Celeste Coon.
Welcome.
Isaac Cordy.
Kurt Cordy.
Amy Potts.
Kenny Newville.
Scott Skinner.
Nick Smith.
Wonderful, did we get everybody here? Oh, we got a few more, welcome.
Steve Meyer.
Welcome. Well, we appreciate you all taking the time to be here tonight and Katrina's bringing up the bike. If anybody wants to go ride, or maybe I will and somebody can, can fill in for me here. Uh, but everybody can come on forward and we'll present the proclamation and do some pictures. Thanks. So like Kevin said, tomorrow night is the community bike ride. So join us tomorrow night if you can. And I forgot to mention that we are actually planning a bike ride between, uh, the two mayors of Jefferson City and Columbia. Uh, Columbia's new mayor, Barbara Buffalo, has, uh, we've been discussing having a mayor's bike ride on Saturday, June 4th. That's our tentative date and we're gonna meet in the middle. So they're gonna ride the Katy from Columbia and we're gonna ride from here. And I know Kevin is working on coordinating that too. So, uh, mark your calendars and we will likely, uh, meet in Hartsburg and have fun, uh, there. Although she did tell me today it's a little bit farther for her to ride than it is for me, but that's okay. So I hope y'all can join us there, so we're looking forward to that bike collaboration as well. All right, item five, we have no public hearings. Item six, there's no appointments this evening. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. We have the city of Jefferson audit presentations from Eversen Company, so we'd like to invite them forward to, uh, make the presentation. Welcome, Mrs. Moore.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear myself, so I don't know if.
Yeah, maybe pull it up just a little bit. There you go, okay, perfect. There you go.
Okay, so as Mayor Turgeon said, I'm Joe Moore. I am with Eversen Company CPAs here in Jefferson City. With me are Wendy Renner and Bobby Murray, um, partners with the firm. So you all have had opportunity to see the audit report. Um, this is what gets generated at, by the end of the whole process. I decided we shouldn't read through all of that. I figured that you'd had ample opportunity to, uh, just to digest that on your own. And I noticed there was already an article in the paper that talked about some of the highlights. So I thought I would tell you, um, a little bit about what happens while we're here. And then I will go over our parts of this audit. So we have a team of about nine that comes in all at the same time. Um, we are provided, staff provides us with trial balances for every fund for the city. And we dive in and our responsibility in order to be able to opine on your financial statements is to obtain substantive and/or analytical, uh, procedures sufficient enough to where we feel comfortable in rendering an opinion on your financial statements. So this product is, um, produced by staff with the exception of the letters that I'm going to go over with you. That is, um, a generally accepted procedure that staff would generate the entire document, not generated by the auditors. So our first letter is our opinion letter. We feel that's the most important part of it. So, and in that letter, we do tell you that we feel that your financial statements were fairly presented in mater, in all material respects. So that is, in our terminology, an unqualified opinion. That's, in other words, as good as it gets. An auditor doesn't ever tell you anything any better than, um, the statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Because the city, um, uh, receives more than $750,000 of federal grant money, the city is also subject to a single audit and, um, an audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards. So we also issue a letter regarding our review of internal controls as it relates to, um, compliance over those government contracts. And then we issue a report that discusses our findings as it relates to, um, the major program that we audited for the single audit. That's, now, does anybody have, who has questions about anything?
Any questions? Okay, well, we appreciate the presentation and, um, thank you for bringing us that summary. And I know counsel has the information in email and thank you for giving us the opportunity to.
Ask questions?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore, appreciate it and to your, uh, team as well, thank you. All right, item B, we have Mr. Chris Leichel, Parks and Recreation Commission Chair to present the year-end review. Welcome.
Keep looking back at my fellow commissioners and see if they're gonna join me on this island, but maybe, maybe they're not.
No.
They're good, alright.
And thank you all for being here as well to the Parks Commissioners.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and, uh, City Council members and staff, uh, very honored, uh, to be here tonight. And thank you for the opportunity to, to make our annual presentation to you and to talk to you, inform you about parks and, and, uh, we're certainly glad to do that. Um, I'm here representing my fellow commissioners, many of whom are here tonight. Uh, start off with Vice President Andrein Grinstone, Stu Murphy, Chris Dern, Roger Schwartz, Kenny Newville, Mary Shantz. That's it, okay. Um, so, so this group really works a great deal. It, um, puts a lot of time in and works a great deal and try to develop parks and present parks to, um, to our constituents and, and our fellow citizens. And some of the things I'll cover tonight briefly in the presentation, but before I get directly into that, I want to talk about a few things. Um, this group, again, works really hard, we communicate really well. We cover at, cover or come from a lot of different directions when it comes to parks and what, what each of us looks at or looks for in parks that hopefully best represents our community. Um, some of the key takeaways that I think, or maybe one of the main takeaways I hope that you pull away from tonight is, is that each park that's either been built or will be built is gonna be top shelf. We want to present the best possible park and best possible experience for not just our citizens, but our guests. And, um, that's kind of been our, our top, top, most important thing that we try to accomplish in, in building a park or rebuilding a park or renovating a park. Um, we believe investing in our, in our infrastructure. Uh, we believe parks is a big part of that infrastructure to help, uh, draw people to Jeff City. And I'll cover a little bit more in depth about that, uh, going forward in the presentation. But we do believe that parks is very integral in, in drawing people to Jefferson City and, and, uh, and providing the park experience for our citizens. Uh, started a few years ago on a park tour, uh, designed specifically for the city council to, to come join us, uh, on a park tour. Um, and, and we feel we've had pretty good success for that. And we certainly want to continue to doing that to, to welcome the city council, uh, to come join us and jump on a bus, on a trolley, and go to very selected parks and kind of give you an update of what's going on or what went on and what our vision is about that particular park or, or what we've accomplished in that particular park. So we, we'll do that every year in the fall, um, we, and we look forward to doing that, look forward to hopefully you joining us in the future in that. Um, just a question, this is a rhetorical question. Does anybody know how many acres of parks we have in Jefferson City? 1,400 acres. And within that 1,400 acres, we have 19 parks. Um, both of those are significant numbers. Both of those take a tremendous amount of resource and assets to be able to maintain and improve, um, and build frankly. Uh, 17 miles of greenway. Uh, that's quite a bit of greenway, uh, and we look to expand on, on those, on that length as time goes on too. And, um, in addition to that, we have 20 miles of unimproved track for bikes like Alex, for example, out of Binder Park. So, um, those take maintenance as well, so, so I always want to mention those, uh, as part of our footprint, if you will. Um, quick note, we had a couple of very nice events yesterday. One of them was the Boy Scouts, um, had a ribbon cutting at their chessboard that they've invested in both in time and, and resources over, uh, at Adirza Island at Deborah Cooper Park. Um, attended by many, uh, governor of our state, Lieutenant Governor of our state, mayor was there. Uh, many other people that supported that was there, it was a beautiful day, uh, quite an event for that. And then also, we had, um, a kind of a cool deal that, that's called Porch Fest. Moved that around to different parts of the town, uh, throughout the year, or not throughout the year, but once a year. And yesterday we had about a thousand participants in that and kind of walk around, listen to music and kind of get together. So that was kind of a, of a neat thing that happened yesterday. Uh, so with that, I'll jump into our parks presentation, our annual report. The first thing on there, of course, is, uh, obviously our, our Parks Commission. Um, and then if you would go, go and skip through to the organizational chart, if you would, please. I get to do that. That's dangerous. Okay, there's our commission members, like I said, many of those are, are right here with us tonight. Um, and, uh, all do a phenomenal job and very supportive of parks and, and the city as a whole. Um, here's our organizational chart. Um, we've worked real hard at this the last, uh, few years, um, of, of kind of reorganization, reorganizing our chart. Um, uh, consolidation in some areas and did a, a really thorough overview and review of this, uh, to try to settle where we are now. And we think we feel pretty comfortable and confident where we are, that we've got a, a nimble staff, a, a staff that, uh, works, works really hard. And, um, and, and I'll get a little bit more in depth here in just a moment, but, um, feel really good about our staff and the way that we have it organized and the people more, most importantly, within those, uh, duty positions and assignments and, and their performance. So, um, and like I said, we feel real good about the nimbleness of our staff and our ability to, uh, to take care of what we need to within the parks programs and development. So we'll jump to the next slide. This slide's particularly interesting. If you notice there in 2019, and I'll, I'll jump down to the second half of the page there, um, relative to, um, percentage of our budget relative to, uh, personnel. As most of us know, uh, any of us that are in government or, or business know that the most expensive and the most, um, investment of our resources are within people. And, um, this is no exception. But if you notice in 2019, it dropped from, from just under 63% to where we are, well, not approximately today, but the end of '21, uh, we're at 51, a little over 51%. And, and those savings are, are not necessarily put in a, in a pot of money and, and saved for year over year over year. Those are reinvested into parks and projects, capital improvements projects. So, um, those savings from, from, from personnel standpoint of reorganization and reshuffling the department allows us to, to take those resources and invest them into actual parks, uh, and projects relating to parks. So that, that was pretty important because I wanted to tie that into the organizational chart. Uh, and then above that is, uh, cost recovery. And I'll, I'll talk briefly about cost recovery. Um, any parks department, uh, because of the way it's set up, looks at cost recovery. Cost recovery is, uh, based on, on various different events that you have or departments within our, our, uh, parks that has the ability to, to, whether it's a fee or whether it's, um, a usage fee or, um, any number of ways to, to recoup funds to help, uh, offset expenses or in some ways to reinvest those funds into projects. And, um, as you see, the cost recovery has grown. That doesn't happen by accident either. That's a pretty important statistic and factual, uh, path that, that we've been reviewing and going on, going under. that that we've been reviewing and going on, going under review for quite a number of years and trying to reduce that number or increase that number. Like we're trying to reduce the cost of personnel department. So when you combine those two factors, it allows you to be again nimble and relocate our assets and resources to build better parks, bigger parks of what whatever the community would want in relation to amenities of a park. So those two things kind of kind of dig in together and and really work really well together. Now, this next slide's really important slide because this is kind of how things got rolling here. Back in, as you see there on the screen, spring of 2008, the master plan was developed. The master plan is a very thick document, a very important document, one that we refer to on a on a monthly basis in the commission meetings. And of course, the staff does it every day. But but I carry this around with me almost like a Bible because it kind of speaks to to what we're doing and how we're doing it and why we're doing it. The why is is because that's what our resources have told us relative to getting, getting, letting us know through surveys what the citizens in certain areas want or what they need. So that that was done 2008. That kind of started this this in motion. You notice there in Vivian Field, we did that renovation in 2018. That was roughly cost of 100,000. And I'm going to go through each one of these briefly and I'll give you costs relative to each of the projects because I didn't include that in the slide, but I wanted to kind of highlight them and talk maybe a little bit about any of those. The Cosmo Field renovation dedicated to Carl Vogel, who we all know and love very much. And and that was a $225,000 reinvestment of those fields to get those up to a standard where the Lady Jays play, for example, they play their home games there. But then obviously all the youth participants there. But but that was an investment that we made and felt that that park was certainly worthy of a commitment. And then after that, the June of 20, we we purchased the the 63 Diamonds complex. And 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 that kind of added to our ability to be able to bring in tournaments from and to host tournaments and bring in people from out out of the area into our city. And that investment's paid dividends and will continue to pay dividends. We reinvested in that facility just as late as the spring, building up new new netting to help protect the balls from going over the net. That that was a major safety concern for us. And we were really happy to 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 get that done this year with new backstops, like I said. So that was a a big time investment in our community to 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 continue to bring events here in Jeff City and people here in Jefferson City. Then Community Park was completed, another significant event in our community. And that was the tune of a $3.3 million investment. And boy, oh, boy, we gotten tremendous feedback, positive feedback about that park and the usage and the amenities of that park. And as as a commission, we're we were delighted and continue to be delighted with the result of that community park has had and and not just that specific area, but our community and and people coming again to town to to see that and to participate in that part. The next one was there was the what I call the big three, which the first one was Community Park. McClung Park was a $1.3 million investment reinvestment into that facility. Hopefully, hopefully, and these, again, this is, all these were part of our tour that we took the city council on the last couple of years. And a beautiful place up there. If I'm not mistaken, it's one of the highest, if not the highest point in Jeff City. So you, you know, you kind of get an overview of 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 Jeff City just from that vantage point, which is pretty neat and it's it's wonderful inside. If you've not been up there, I certainly encourage you to go see that one. And then May of 21, you notice we had three of these projects bam 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 bam, right? Right, one right after the other. The next one is the amphitheater out at Riverside Park. Extremely excited about that project and what that's brought to our city and our citizens and many guests for a long, long, long time coming to the amphitheater. That was a $3.5 million investment. Those three projects alone totaled 8.1 million and those were paid by bonds. First time parks had gone down the the road of bonds in the history. And again, we feel very confident in our ability, not only wanting to repay that that debt, but our 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 investment in those three projects and what they brought to our city. So anyway, those are the big three, certainly pivotal in in our thought processes and what we were going to deliver back to the city whenever we approached about the bonds. Then the next one there, December 21, is Deborah Cooper Park and Adrian's Island. What an investment. What what a cool, cool project, one that many are going to be able to see for a lifetime. I grew up in southeast Missouri on a river, always had river access. The only town in in the only city or town in the state that had rivers such as ours that didn't have river access. And now we've got that for the first time. Pretty cool. If you've not watched, walked, walked across the bicentennial bridge, whether it's either early in the morning or late in the evening or anytime during the day. For that matter, it's a it's a quite a sight to see and one that will be around a long, long time. So that was a $550,000 investment from a park standpoint. And it'll wind up being around a $600,000 investment when you consider the pavilion that's going in down there, the restrooms, electrical, and a few other amenities there that are going to be really nice. Then we jump ahead to April 2022 and you look at the Riverside Manor and the renovation of that. And, you know, our master plan talks about a lot of different things in it. And we're trying to tie this in as part of our master plan. That that Manor does it quite well relative to Riverside Park. And I'll talk briefly about this as well. And I'll jump, jump ahead just a little bit and include botanical gardens in that because we're starting the botanical garden process and the investment. It's a multi-phase operation. It it it'll take years for that, as many years to develop that as goes on here. But the botanical gardens and and the Manor is a key element of that. It's it's the entryway into the botanical gardens. And we see, we envision great things for that for our community and for our guests. And again, it's it's providing resources for for our our citizens to go enjoy and see and witness. There'll be an overlook there for the river as well and our guests. Quite an investment long term for that. But boy, is that going to be another another element of our of our park system that's going to be viewed by many. And we're really excited for that, that kind of to kick off the fall of this year. So anyway, that those are kind of the projects that have kind of got us where we are. I wanted to take that opportunity to to brief you and remind you of those projects and what they are and the investment in which it took to get there. And then kind of give you a little bit about, and I'll talk on the next slide about some stuff, next couple of slides and what we're going to talk about going forward. But that's kind of it. And then I certainly don't want to overlook, be remiss and not to mention that prior to 2018, what was built over by Jeff City High School, the Link. What a resource that's been to our community and our city. And and that was done in cooperation with Lincoln and and both parties, I believe, are very proud of that or that relationship and work every day to further that that building and continue to grow and again, draw people to Jefferson City. So anyway, as the master plan goes, we've completed four of the 13 elements that the master plan identified. Those other remaining nine elements are are significant ones. But but as far as remodel, renovation or build, but but we're off to a really, really good start. Master plan is not a three to five year deal. It's a five to 25 year deal. It takes a long time to accomplish those and sometimes priorities change a little bit. And you got to refocus things and move things around and make it work. And and our commission's done a really good job of identifying those. And the city council's done an excellent job and very much appreciated the job of supporting parks and in approval and moving forward with those projects. So again, we'll certainly address that a little bit, a little bit more here in just a few moments. But and I've talked about it a couple of times in here. I think this is very relative to to parks, but our city as a whole, economic impact. If we can get people to come to Jefferson City for whatever the reason and they get to stay a night or two as a result of a sporting event or an activity, a concert, those are revenue dollars that comes to the city from from those that are basically here visiting. And it helps to offset expenses and helps prop up budgets and the city's no different. And these are our numbers that that we've estimated just in 2021 of of how impactful that they can be and how important they are to sustainment and continued growth in our communities. Our goal should be to bring people to Jeff City because they help our economy and help us thrive. So I think that would be very important to talk about that and and I very strongly feel feel about that. Planning ahead, there's a whole host of things, like I said, in our master plan that we would like to do. And we continue to touch various parts of our parks throughout the year as planned. Those aren't knee jerk reactions typically. Those are well thought out, well in advance, addressing of those particular needs. But some of the things that I've listed here are the Ellis Porter Botanical Gardens. We've talked about those. That's going to be an ongoing discussion because that's an ongoing project, multi-phased, as I said. Missouri State Penitentiary redevelopment. At some level, parks will have have a hand in some of that depending upon which way we go and and what we feel and when we feel that that or that development continues or starts. But that's a big one as we see it too down the road here in the near future. Greenway expansion, that's again, it's an every year deal. We talk about that. There's all kinds of different places that we connect, but that's that's an area again of our commitment to our citizens to try to expand our greenway and we'll continue to do that. Playground improvements, that's that's one that, man, it's expensive to do a park or to to put amenities in a park, really, really expensive. And and we're constantly looking at ways to do that and improve the playground equipment, the features. Those are those are high dollar items, just so you know. And and we address those. We've got those on a short term. We've got program funds for this year for three different parks to get new upgrades. So I just wanted to touch on that because that's kind of one of those things that we do quite often. And then in closing, I'd just like to 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 basically paraphrase what I put here on the last slide here. Our Parks and Recreation Forest Department works extremely hard to provide the best possible park experience to our community, its members and its guests. We continue to think outside the box to invest in our park system. And again, it's it's 1,400 acres allows us to really urge individuals and pet owners, families to spend time together outdoors. I will note that that prior to COVID or right at the time COVID kicked off, I sat down with our director, Todd Spaulding, and and I had to talk about that and how important it was as as we knew it in the infancy stage, how important it was to have assets and resources for for our citizens to be able to get outside and and spend time in our parks. Because, you know, that was kind of where our safe zone was, if you can imagine that, you know. Indoors was not where we needed to be. We needed to be outside. What a great opportunity for parks to step up and J C Parks to step up and provide the amenities and increase our level of investment into our parks in order to be able to provide that. So that's basically it. I wanted to again thank the council and the mayor and the support that you've given parks in the past and hopefully it continues because I hopefully you take away from this and see that that there's a lot of good things that have come from parks, a lot of good things that that's the city is doing, you guys and gals are doing. And parks plays a small part in that. And thank you very much for your support, continued support. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Chairman Lichel, for that report. Does council have any questions or comments? Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, sir. Chris, is the is the park on Miller Street still on the horizon for upgrades?
Yes, sir. It certainly is. If you if if you look at our parks plan or our master plan, it came in about fourth or fifth on the priority list. So yes, to his question, it is. All these things are on our docket, if you will, to address. As you know, not too awfully long ago, there was thinking and and support of the Veterans Cemetery being moved or expanded and we were going to move park to one side of 50 to the other side of 50. So we don't think that that is going to work out the way that it had planned, unfortunately, for the for our veterans. But we're still going to invest in that that park, no doubt about it.
Do you have any timeframe on that? I think that you're right about the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah. So within the next 24 months, I think we'll see some 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 major league investment into that park.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Ward?
There's a cute little pocket park on Hickory, on the corner of Hickory and Adams. You know, it is a little park, but it's heavily used by the children that live surrounding it on all four sides. There's a lot of safety concerns regarding a basketball being played in the street because there isn't a basketball court there. I know I have talked to Director Spaulding regarding a half court being installed there. And it was my impression that that would start soon. I know that park was in the top five in the master plan or I don't know if it got shifted around. But I was just wondering if you know the schedule on that. I hate to put you on the spot, but.
Yep. No, I don't mind that at all. Hickory Adams was actually seventh on our list.
Seventh, okay.
Park Place up there as well, not too far, not too far away. Both parks are expected to have some some improvements done with them. I don't necessarily have the timeline, but certainly.
The beds on the concrete, yeah, sorry. That's actually, I should have something to the commission actually by summertime. So the plan is in place. We got the playground designs back. I think I spoke to you all a little bit about that, but they're working on some things. And I hope to have that to the commission by the summer.
Okay, great. It's also a park that's used a lot for neighborhood meetings, for our community trash cleanup, you know, it just, it it is a very heavily used park, even though it's just a small pocket park and, you know, for the safety of the kids in that area, so.
No, thank you very much. Certainly on our target list for sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Deacon?
On the wish list, and this is an old wish, even former mayor and councilman John Landware's wish for the full service campground across the river, the legions of bicyclists, especially we have children on both coasts, we do a lot of, well, we get along with you, Jerry, so we do a lot of car traveling, my wife and I. The number of motorhomes with bicycles is is unbelievable. The this is would truly be a destination. One of my children, one of those crazy mountain bikers out in Oakland, he said, people talk about this place all over. All the bicycle crazies do. They would go up the Ashley, I mean, Hartsburg, maybe farther, come and take a shower, come into town. I thought about it with the people just on backpacks, give them a shower. But he said, look at how many people even go with the S E C following the football and basketball and stuff. I think it would be a boon to the economy, especially uptown. And you guys would be amazed how many people are out there. I mean, it's full of old people and bicycles, maybe good electric bicycles, but it's full out there.
Now, in relation to that, I think it's it's within the the park planning. I wouldn't say long term or shorter term to address the campground issue over there. It's one of the the many blocks that we want to try to check because we certainly recognize and would agree with you. We certainly want it want it near the, it's close to the, we don't, the closest land we have to the Katy Trail would be 63 Diamonds and it's certainly not set up for anything. We have the park, the North Jeff City Park over there, but but that's not necessarily up against Katy Trail.
So I think the city owns a lot of that land. The city and the parks could, I'm sure, could work together. That isn't, didn't knock the city by Cedar City? Yeah, I think we own that. We have fields over there. Who, the rugby fields over there by the little golf course. There's a lot of land there and and the infrastructure is is simple.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
Councilman Spencer?
Thank you all for coming tonight and you chairman to give a very thorough report. I guess as we start our budget process for the next coming year, I guess my question would be, what's your all's viewpoint is for as, you know, condoning pay raises for select employees within Parks and Rec that go above and beyond what the council is budgeted for during their budget process?
Well, I appreciate your question. I I would also, basically, my my answer would be is is the budget cycle is upon us and we'll certainly present budget for approval. Certainly not prepared tonight to go into into depth in any of that stuff tonight. This was basically an overview of where we were, where we've come from and what our plans going forward operationally is. And we'll certainly be be willing and present our budget here in the near future when we're required to.
But I mean, do you do you plan to? But I mean, do you do you plan to continue that practice of of giving raises above and beyond what the budget is, what the council is?
We're in the process of reuniting our budget right now. The commission members will see that budget for the first time at either our next, well, it'll be our next commission meeting here coming up next week. And then we will continue to look at that budget again in May and again in June and then present to you in July.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilman Kemna?
I mean, I just appreciate everything that you guys all do and coming to the meetings. I know how hard y'all work and same with Todd. So appreciate the presentation. You know, I couldn't tell you how many times I've heard from constituents and people throughout the community that have already had great things to say about, you know, the parks that that you presented, Community Park, the amphitheater, all that, and I know just the plans going forward are are just going to be as top notch. So appreciate everything you guys do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilman Spicer and then Spencer.
Thank you all for what you do. Thank everyone but Andre, I want to thank him. But, uh, uh, build a legends across the river. You guys own that, don't you?
63 Diamonds.
Yeah, 63, build the legends to me when it was built, so. Uh, handicap accessory cap over there. Oh, you do have some concrete. I was over watching a game here last week. There was a guy in a wheelchair over there. I really couldn't see over the deal, so he had to get out of his chair that he was in to another chair. And I had a call from a resident asking me, I don't know if Todd had heard anything about that over there.
We have, yeah, and and, you know, we, every year, we've made some inclusive type of improvements and Aaron and JJ received those same calls and we're going to pour some different pads there. But all that concrete's new, it wasn't there before in the handicap parking.
Yeah, I know that's new.
So we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna provide some viewing areas for people in chairs. We're going to get to that real soon. We heard that just a couple of weeks ago.
Yep. And just to follow up on on that, you know, we bought 63 Diamonds and identified early on some of the investments that we're going to have to take. It was an investment, just one, by the property, which was an important tool to add to our toolbox. But then you gotta equip it and maintain it and build it up. And that is one of the big things that, like Director Spaulding just said, you know, we've poured a pretty good amount of concrete over there already and redone redesigned the parking lot, put the new netting up, the backstop's up, huge safety concern. So we're checking checking off things that need to be done. That would certainly be one of them, so thank you. Didn't hardly recognize you there, Derek Spicer, you're looking awful good, man. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Spencer?
Last fall, I was, had an elderly gentleman fall and was injured pretty severely. And I just want to say thank you to the maintenance staff that went out and had a quick response to address that issue and repair those sidewalks. And I think there was even some improvement in some lighting there as well. And so appreciate the maintenance staff. I know I mentioned that to JJ when he was representing the department at one of our council meetings, but I also want to let you all know that that was very appreciative and and I went out and looked at it and it there is just such a major difference between with that sidewalk improvement, so thank you all very much.
Yeah, and 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 that leads to kind of just an additional point or comment. There's so many areas within our parks that we've touched to improve, but there's yet so many left to do, little things that can be big things real quick. So anytime we get input from the community, city council, obviously, the mayor, city administrator, we'll do our best to get a program to get it in the budget to get it done, so.
Any other questions, comments? And I know on Friday, you also had a retirement of Dennis Sax after, I think he was 45? Wait, how many?
Forty-six.
Forty-six years, probably the longest current city employee tenure. But that shows, I think, a lot for longevity and for just the Parks Department as far as a place to work for someone to work. I mean, 46 years was impressive, so I feel like that needs to be mentioned. We have invited him to come to a council meeting if he wants to. But a couple of things too that, as mayor, I hear a lot of comments and typically they'll come to me about, you know, I'll get the kudos for it or the praise, but really it's the council as a whole and the Parks Department and Commission working together. Three things that I think I hear probably the most of are about the amphitheater. And I was there at their first show, I think the Friday before last. And while I was there, I met some people that had come in from an hour away, they lived an hour away, there was probably six of them that came to Jefferson City, and they made a point to tell me that they went to eat at a local restaurant before they came to the show and they wish they had it there. We're asking, how did we do this? Because they they wish they had it in their town. So that brings people, of course, from all over, and I hear that every time I, just countless people, and I love when I'm consistently interrupted at the amphitheater. I love that because I know what they're going to tell me when they say, are you, are you the mayor? Because I know what's coming next. And I wish that everybody in this room could hear the compliments that I get, but that's just one to pass along because thinking that they are also, you know, eating at our restaurants and shopping at our local establishments and that they'll come back. Another one is our greenways. I think I hear that and I'm sure the rest of you do as well, of the the greenway system in town. And I heard someone say that they wish they had that in their city. And we also had a bike rider on the last community bike ride from Ralla who was able to participate since it was a weeknight here and mentioned one amenity that is really unheard of to have the amount of trails and greenways that we have. And then just yesterday, when I was on Adrian's Island after the the dedication of the chessboard and someone there from northern Missouri said, if we had this in our town, I would be here all the time. And so I just hear those comments consistently and it's one of the things that people really love about Jefferson City. So appreciate your hard work and for the vision and the plan that you have in place and being able to reference that and help answer our questions and take our feedback for things that maybe could be improved that were discussed tonight as well. I also appreciate the partnership when you do the annual going around hands on to see firsthand, to see the parks in person and taking us all there, taking council members and the parks commissioners, because those visits are helpful and then you get to see year after year what you've talked about and then putting that into action. And I remember going to the amphitheater when it was under construction and some of those parks before they were done and getting to see that progress is is pretty amazing. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. While we're passing out plaudits, I will say Porch Fest yesterday was a tremendous success. We were happy to have, I think the number was actually between four and 5,000 people in attendance over in the beautiful, talented and hospitable Fifth Ward. And the whole thing just went off seemingly without a hitch. So many people there, artists, musicians, attendees, the food service was busy, the artists who were selling items stayed busy. I think everyone had a great time and just, you know, additional kudos for another job well done by your folks.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. And I think, not to put you on the spot, but you you performed, from what I understand.
They they did allow some rank amateurs to slide in there with the the real musicians. That's true.
Great job.
I don't, I don't know if any of us will be around when it's time for that piece of art, but we'll see.
Great job. Councilman Deacon?
I forgot to, thank you, you were saying Binder Lake. It was Frederick Binder, not binder. That changed when conservation took over the big lake, but it was Frederick Binder, a well-known builder in town. Thanks for using that term.
Yes, sir. And I don't even, I'm not even originally from Jeff City.
I've already made that mistake, so I will apologize in advance. And before we move on, I do have announcements, and one announcement kind of pertains to parks, so y'all can stay for my, for the next item on the agenda here. So I spoke at East School second grade last week, and the topic was, what do you like about their town? And they each had questionnaires. So this is filled with some questionnaires from second graders, and since about 98% of them pertain to parks, I'm going to pass this over to Director Spaulding. So let's pass that down because I said to the students that I would make sure that our Parks Commissioners had a chance to see these, so maybe you can kind of scan that in and put that as part of your packet next week. But I will give you a summary of of what they liked the best about Jefferson City. And I pulled it up, it was two classrooms, so that was from one. The others shared their concerns and likes. Their concerns were potholes by East School. Number two was more city buses running on weekends. Number three was more places or for kids to hang out and have fun. Number four was a dog park. And number five was cleaner parks. Those were their concerns. Their likes, number one was stores, number two was parks, number three is that it's a quiet town, number four, pizza places and restaurants, number five, ice cream trucks and central dairy. So out of all those, you ranked above pizza places and ice cream trucks. I'm just saying, that was a pretty big deal. After talking with the students, though, they did say that they would like more swings and more zip lines because now that you put the one at Community Park, they're really tuned into that and they kind of would like those everywhere. So those were kind of the two things they advocated for. So I said that I would pass that on, and I know someday when there are mayors and council members sitting in this room, what they like. But hearing it from students and what, hearing it, how much they love our parks was was also pretty cool, so. All right, any last questions, comments? Okay, thank you all for your time and sort of...
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've moved on to announcements here as I've already started into my announcements tonight. So East School was really fun getting their feedback from students. A few other announcements, we mentioned already, the dedication of the chessboard on Adrian's Island. That was an Eagle Scout project from Andrew Dowden from Jefferson City. And Maya Thomas built the two benches that are on either side, and she's from Columbia. So we had several scouts in attendance yesterday along with the National Chess Hall of Fame, which is out of St. Louis there. So when you get a chance to go and and enjoy the chessboard, Andrew Dowden, the Eagle Scout, talked about his inspiration for that and just logistically how he made it happen. It looks like it's just sitting on the ground, but there was a lot of work that went into actually construct that. So I did invite Andrew and Maya and the scouts to come to a council meeting if they want to share the story. I think it was very interesting to hear what went into that. And then a few other things. Wednesday, May 4th is the Sketch Day recognition. I believe that's at 5:00 P. M. So that is at Capitol Arts, so be sure to check out Capitol Arts on Facebook and Instagram to get the full schedule for that reception. And they will also come, as they do every year, after the winters are announced, they'll come to a future council meeting. Also, this week, we are recognizing a few special weeks, so I will announce that this is Travel and Tourism Week, May 1st through 7th. So we are going to be recognizing Amtrak and I'll be making a visit there to bring some treats to the the temporary Amtrak station that we have right now and would also invite people to show their appreciation. And just remind everyone that that station is is controlled by volunteers or I guess helped by volunteers. So every train that comes through, there's a group that makes sure that they're there and welcomed every single time the train comes in, and that's all our volunteers from the from the community. So we certainly appreciate the Amtrak volunteers. So if you get a chance to maybe come over to the trailer and and recognize them, that would be appreciated. Also, it is Missouri's Local Government Week, May 1st through 7th. So want to take a moment to thank all of our local government employees, every single city employee that makes the city work and run, and some of you we see more often, some of you we don't, and there's so much that happens, whether it's on the road, in an office, whatever it may be, with our city employees. And certainly, we appreciate local government and especially the employees that make it work for us. So Local Government Week, take a moment to thank your city employees for what they do. And today, we were in the governor's office, Governor Parson recognized local government with a special proclamation, and he recognized some mayors from around the state along with school board members and county commissioners recognizing local government. And currently, that proclamation is Columbia, in Columbia for their council meeting tonight, and it will make the rounds to all of the local governments around to share just how important that is. Also, want to thank everyone for doing all the cleanups that were held in April. I know there was just one, I believe, on the east side on Sunday. There was the one at, on, the south side one was two weeks, or last Sunday, west side downtown for the, we had so many days there, they're all running together, but the, so many community cleanups. I know Mr. Kroll, you were kind of in charge of one of the ones downtown and took the time on a Saturday to coordinate volunteers for that. So there was a lot of cleanups and plantings and a lot of you participated in them, and I don't know if anyone has any comments about it, but appreciate what y'all did. I think Councilman Lester even went all the way to Columbia to clean up too, so.
Earth Day.
Earth Day, that's right, so.
Jane gave starter plants of pots to children, so I don't have to...
Wonderful, thank you, Jane.
Sunflowers, stirrions and tomatoes.
Great. Well, thanks for everyone. If everyone just does their part, it would really make a difference. Also, last week was the legislative bike ride that we started at the Capitol, went to the Katy Trail and had legislators joining us for that. So that was a good time to recognize the importance of bikes. And Porch Fest was already touched on, and I did see you there, Councilman Hensley, but there were so many people that from a distance, I could hardly even say hi to you because there were that many people, which was just incredible day.
Sea of people.
It was a sea of people.
Little neighborhood over there.
It really was. It was just incredible. And and then lastly, we had the Boys and Girls Club here last week, and they learned how to build an actual bridge. So Mr. Smith showed them how to build a bridge here in council chambers. We had police department representatives, we had public works, we had planning, we had administration, we had Gail from H R talking to the kids about what it was like here at City Hall, and they made a thank you for us. Says, "Thank you, Mayor Turgeon and city staff from the Boys and Girls Club Torch Leadership Program. Leaders like you are calm, supportive, polite, social, kind, strong, open-minded, helpful, talkative and more." So anyway, it was really nice that they made something nice for us, so wanted to share that with city staff who spent quite a bit of time with the kids. And then right after that, we did the dedication for the new ambulance building across the street. So we've had a lot of activity here going on since we last met. So with that, I will go through the four standing committees. If everybody would announce any upcoming meetings or anything that they would like to. Item one, administration.
We're meeting this Wednesday, May the 4th at 7:30 A. M. across the hall in the Boom Bancroft Room.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ward. Finance?
Nothing. In the very near future, our next meeting will be the Thursday morning following the next city council meeting.
Thank you. Public Safety?
Yes, that'll be the last, the last Thursday in May. I believe that's the 26th, 7:30 A. M. in the police training room.
Thank you. And Public Works?
Yes, we will meet next Thursday, which is May the 12th, 7:30. We're going to have, I think, a busy year, so looking forward to working with that committee and all the work that our staff does. Would like to just talk about one other event that took place over the weekend representing the Pharmacy Association. I want to thank Lieutenant Williams and the work that he and Sheriff Wheeler did on the Drug Take Back Program. It's, our members across the state are very active in those programs. I talked to a number of pharmacists in this area and they usually try to steer people to the program that is run. I think your email to us said there were 100 pounds of products picked up, which is good. I mean, we we worked very aggressively and...
That was the, that was the information that we got. We haven't turned it over to DEA yet, that's later this week, but it looks like it was close to 100 pounds that was collected on Saturday.
It's very important to our members. We have worked very aggressively, especially with the opioid crisis over the last five to eight years. So I appreciate everybody that was involved in that.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater and Lieutenant Williams. Any other, did we do Public Works? Yeah, we did. Okay, so any other council announcements? Okay. Item 10, presentations from the gallery. We do have Michelle Westler to talk about 2022 number five if needed. So I don't know, Michelle, if, is Michelle on the... Oh, hi, Michelle. Okay, didn't see you in in person there. Did you want to speak or just wait until that item comes up in case there's questions? Okay, thank you. We have Michelle from Housing, Ms. Westler from Housing Authority if needed. So we will go on to item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull item D off for a couple of questions. And again, I appreciate staff's work on it. I just want to make sure that I'm set as we move forward with that project.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to approve item A through E excluding D.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and we will take up item 11D. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, and then we'll have some discussion on the item. Do you have anything to discuss or...
Yeah, I just want to make make sure that that I understand as we move forward. I know we got a lot of input into that issue as we went through, which was great because I think we continue... I think we continue to refine it. Staff has done an amazing job of kind of wa- walking us through. And Mr. Melman, I think, helped us clean up the ordinance. So hopefully, everybody realized we're on the same page. But my question was, you know, as we go through this process and there's been a, a organization or a company identified to begin the process that we talked about in the, the substitute ordinance, as those reports come back, I'm guessing some of those are going to be different from where we currently stand. How will we move forward as we get the responses back from them, at least on those seven programs, seven projects? And you kind of, what, what's the next step after we get their report?
Okay. So going from the, the memo that Ryan updated, the council on, the sort of, it's not necessarily step by step chronologically, but sort of group, we're still in the process of being able to use money from 408 Lafayette to take down 104 and 108 Jackson, as, as we talked about. The next step, we were going to go, and that's what this Consent Agenda item is, to hire a structural engineer to give us report on the structural issues, cost to rehabilitate, to repair the, the, the structure and provide us report, a written report. We've had previous reports by this company and they're very thorough. We will make those available to the council, as we said, because the idea is y'all are going to determine which ones might need to be addressed immediately, you know, validating or verifying or collaborating, collaborating, I'll get it out. The, the report would back up the staff's assessment of, of the project and cost to repair and then give you the, the numbers. Certainly at that time, I think the idea was to know which ones, the council does not want to demolish at, at that time. But then go out through the interested parties' process, which Ryan knows more about, setting up the escrow and things like that. So once we get this structural assessment back, we're also simultaneously, I believe I sent an email out to the council saying we're, we're going out for bids on demolitions or a whole slew of properties. We can either do them individually or through a volume discount. That's also to provide the council an idea of what that cost would be. So we're, we're trying to give the council as much information as we can to be able to make good, well-informed decisions about moving forward on, on the rehabilitation. And since Ryan drafted the latter part of that process, if there's any questions on the interested parties, the sale process, I would let him try to explain that first and jump in and help him if I could.
Sure. To, to zero on, on, on your question, I think, these structural assessments, they're, they're not going to be binding on the city council and, or, or the city staff or anyone. This is information and, and the way the memo was set forth and approved, it's going to be up to the city council to make those decisions on which one are going to be demolished. And so, you know, the information that, that we're planning to have for you is a combination of the structural assessments, the demolition cost estimates, you know, any, any information and, and knowledge that you guys personally have about the project and the area, that's all going to factor in, into, into what, into what the city council's decision is going to be and, and ultimately what the city council's goals are for the area. And so it's, 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 I don't envy you. It's going to be, you know, tough decisions and hopefully all this information works to do nothing but provide you with the information necessary to make the right decisions. So.
Well, I appreciate, I, I just wanted to raise that. I know there are a lot of converging views, a lot of different parties. You know, I know the Housing Authority has some interest and have been allies and partners with us on this. Again, I, I assume others are getting comments. And, you know, as you indicated, we're going to have some decisions to make. And, I mean, I think it shows that the process works. If we get it out there and we get people involved, it's great having a room full of people that, that talk about it because I think that's how we solve difficult issues. So again, I appreciate the work that staff has done. I think sometimes from, at least from my perspective on the committee level, we weren't really sure what questions that we needed to be asking, but they've kind of helped us work through that process. So I appreciate everybody that's been involved. There's going to be probably some tough decisions as we move forward, but the input in advance versus letting it get to a point where frustrations get ahead of what's actually going on will, will help. So, yeah, I think this is a good step and I appreciate. And I just wanted to make sure that we talked a little bit about it. It just didn't move through the consent agenda because we're going to have a lot more discussions on these issues. It's a very important corridor in our community.
Sorry to interrupt. I, I think an additional point to, 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 to see here is that this is just a portion of the structures over there. We're looking at some alternative funding opportunities to do, to do the second half of the properties. And so there's going to be a little bit of rolling status as the information comes in. But ultimately, you know, what we talked about is we have one kind of conjunction point of where we'll have all the information at the same time, you know, you know, prior, prior to, you know, the, the kind of ultimate decisions on, on, you know, that are irreversible. So, you know, this is just a portion. We do expect structural assessments on some of the remaining property as well. They're just not part of this contract. We're looking at alternative financing opportunities to get those done as well, potentially with some, some grant opportunities. So this is just a portion of that package, but also kind of the very first important step and, and really probably addressing the most critical properties on, on the, on the project list.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. So we have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion on item D? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduce 2022-4.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri establishing automatic aid agreements with four fire protection districts.
Division Chief Blomberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, if approved by council, would approve four MOUs with neighboring fire departments to the city, allowing us to give and receive aid to those departments. And in the case of, in the event of dispatch structural fires only. I have to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you. 2022-5.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri changing, amending, modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 0.2 acres of land addressed as 101 Jackson Street and 504 East State Street from MU1 mixed use to PUD planned unit development and approving a preliminary PUD plan.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a two-part zoning action coming out of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first part is actually to rezone the prop, next slide, please. The, the property highlighted here in black from the mixed use one zoning to a planned unit development zoning. You can see here, the zoning currently has some C3 to the south. There's already a planned unit to the north. The RA2 is a multifamily and whatnot. So the underlying zoning for MU1 was put in place based on the general characteristics of the area, as, as it was when the overlay district was put on there. And a four-unit multifamily dwelling is permitted under that zoning. The applicant would like to use the property there, which was originally a duplex, then at some time later converted to a fourplex on the corner of Jackson and State Street, into five units. That is essentially the reason for the rezoning application. Their PUD plan, next slide, please. Their PUD plan, they're planning on keeping the, the structure basically the same on the outside. There is the Neighborhood Conservation District, also known as the Capital Overlay District, which would dictate the exterior look and feel. So that would, it would remain in character into the neighborhood. That is not changing. Basically, the use is changing, which would allow an additional dwelling unit that will be in the basement. And I believe it will also be handicap accessible. And that, that would meet the building code requirements and the other city requirements and the zoning code for the numbers of windows and things like that for that unit. The property behind it is also being transferred to the new owners, transformational housing. And they intend to put a parking lot on that property. It's a small parking lot. They, parking requirement is about 10 parking spaces total and they would have a credit for five on the street. The parking lot has a maximum, I think, up to eight or 10 spaces. I don't know if that needs to be built or if they are going to build it out to that size, but it's certainly in their, uh, uh, plan. I know that's sort of a lot just to throw out. I'd be glad to answer any questions. There was a comment by the next door neighbor. She inquired about what the project was. She also then commented later that she's in support of it. So with that, I'd answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We also thank Ms. Westler from Housing Authority for being here as well for that item. 2022 number six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Craft and Toll for the Capitol Area Active Transportation Plan, formerly known as the Capitol Area Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back earlier this year, I believe we did a budget adjustment to the MPO budget that would fund this project and just gave a brief description of what it was. Basically, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, a regional transportation planning group, which is a quasi-governmental organization involving Calway County, Cole County, Holt Summit, St. Martin's, Wardsville, Taos, Cole County, and the state of Missouri. And they do the long-range transportation planning. One thing that they're taking upon themselves is to update the Jefferson City, actually several documents, the Campo Bike Ped Plan, the Jefferson City Greenway Plan, the sidewalk plan and associated maps with that. And then other jurisdictions would be using the same document to, to update their active transportation plans. The MPO has gone out following the city purchasing procedures and had a selection committee that reviewed all of the respondents that responded to this request for qualifications. And I believe that's in the packet. And the company that stood out most is Craft and Toll. They've done work like this in the same similar sized communities. A lot of the other consultants either did work for really large metropolitan areas, which we don't really fall into that, or really small neighborhood type plans. So we felt they were most qualified in all the categories we reviewed. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. If I may back up, it is 80% federally funded out of the MPO money, which comes to the state of Missouri. And the local match is coming through the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Just a comment. There are several of us has said on campus, we, we have seen this before. I just, again, wanted to commend staff. I think we got a good picture of how much of an interest there is in bikes in those communities. Think they get, did a good job of putting together a program, isolating some funding for it. And then thanks to our partners at Parks for helping pick up the additional costs. Thanks for the work and look forward to, as, as it moves down the line.
Thank you. Councilman Fitzwater. Item 13, Bills Pending 2022-1.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing various sanitary sewer easements on the property addressed as 2106 Jefferson Street in the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would vacate some sanitary sewer easements. That property has seen some redevelopment by the Central Electric Power Co-op, building some much larger facilities there. And so they relocated some of the sewer mains. So this would vacate the, the old easements.
Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Deacon, Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes. 2022-2.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing various sewer easements on the properties addressed as 3031 and 3101 South 10 Mile Drive in the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Another similar type issue is that there's a residential group home type setting in this location and they recently expanded. And this would, they too had to move some sewer lines to accommodate that. And this would vacate the old easements.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman, Deacon.
Bill passes. 2022-3.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with engineering surveys and services in the amount of $141,140 for the Ohio Street Bridge project.
Mr. Marash?
Yes, thank you. And as clerk indicated, ordinance to approve a engineering design contract with ESNS here locally in town to redesign the Ohio Street Bridge. It's been closed for a few years now. And we have to answer any question about it. The, the source of funding for this was excess or contingency funds out of the sales tax.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah. And again, I, I appreciate all the work that staff has, has done on this project. We have talked about this Ohio Street Bridge for the last couple of years, looked at it in the sales tax. And they've done a good job of keeping Public Works up to speed. We had asked them to bring this back to us, which they did. You know, feel very comfortable with the document. But in talking to some community members and more, you know, I guess equally as important, some other council members, we feel like there's probably a little bit of additional due diligence that we need to do before pushing this forward. So I'd like to put it on the informal calendar to give us just a little bit more time to debate the issue, kind of look at what the construction costs are, our options, before we spend money on a project that may or may not move forward.
Thank you. So we've had the request to place it on the informal from the bill sponsor. Any other discussion or comments? Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Item 14, nothing on the informal. Item 15, Resolutions 2022-1.
A resolution authorizing the approval of successor directors to the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This resolution would appoint a, a, a slate of directors whose terms have expired on the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District. The, generally, the developer under the redevelopment agreement is allowed to name the directors to that, to that board, with an exception that that one seat is reserved for a city member. So the, the three successor members to be appointed to that, to that Sid Board is Jamie Reed and Gina Thannon, who represent the developers as property owners. And the, the new successor driver, director to represent the city will be interim finance director Sheila Perry. So we happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman, Deacon, Fitzwater.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2022-2.
A resolution authorizing the approval of successor directors to the MSP Community Improvement District.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. The MSP Community Improvement District has seen the departure of three of its directors. And so there are three unexpired terms to be filled. Two of those seats are to be filled by the state of Missouri as property owner at the MSP area. They have indicated that the, the property owner representative for the state of Missouri would be Kenneth Zellers, who is the current Commissioner of Administration, and Caroline Coulter, who is the current Deputy Commissioner of Administration. Also, once again, filling the, the seat vacated by Marjorie Miller will be Sheila Perry.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman, Deacon, Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2022-3.
A resolution recognizing the historical significance of the battle that never was.
Councilman Spencer?
Yes, this is just a recognition of the council to recognize the events of October 7th of General Sterling Price not attacking the city of Jefferson. This is kind of my second attempt at this. And I'd just like to thank Councilman Hensley for his efforts in partnering with this resolution. I think it's just an opportunity for us to be united as a council and kind of also to feel as a community in recognizing the state.
Any further discussion or a motion to approve?
Second.
I know we have two people that just raised their hands in the audience. So I would ask council, I mean, we have the sign up sheet, but I know it was brought in maybe a few minutes early, but I don't know if that affected. We always try to take, okay. community input or public input. So is there any objection to allowing community input? Seeing none? And I know we also have Gail signed up, but is that for something different? Okay. So if it is pertaining to an agenda item, if you would come to the podium and give us your name, and then we'll... Or is this, this is the other?
This is for the resolution. We need a resolution.
Oh, for the, we'll do for the resolution first. So I'm sorry. I think I got... Or you're for just anything on the agenda? Not, or not for this agenda item? Yeah, sure. Okay. Sorry about that confusion. Thank you. We're going a little bit, a little bit out of order, but we appreciate everybody's patience there. So if anyone's here to speak on resolution twenty twenty-two, three, if you would just come forward and give us your name. So, thank you. Welcome.
My name is Jan Schumaker. I do want to clarify, just so I know for next time, where is the sign-up sheet when you arrive? Because I miss that altogether, and I don't want to be, you know, delinquent in that.
Oh, no. You're not delinquent. We have it usually outside, but there was quite a bit of extra people kind of where he's standing right there, kind of on the side.
Okay.
But we always...
So it's like actually not in this room even?
It's just right, yeah, right outside the door. But we, we always...
I will look for that next time.
I don't think we've ever turned down. We always welcome input, so you're, you're fine. Totally fine.
And I have a handout, so I... So thank you for allowing me to speak without the sign-up ahead of time. My name is Jan Schumaker with the Jefferson City Racial Equity Group. And I just have one recommendation on the resolution, and that to allow it to be historically accurate. And you can see in the middle of the page there, bold-faced, to take out the speculation about Sterling Price's reason for not attacking, because that is speculation as compared to historic fact. And, you know, if we're going to have a historic resolution, then we'd like to have it, you know, factual and not speculative. So, and as I've indicated below that, he, that may not have been, affection for his hometown may not have been accurate anyway, but once again, it's speculation. So it's just a request to move that, remove that phrase about likely maintained his affection for our town. So that's just what I wanted to suggest.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. I know I saw another hand back here. If you, you're welcome to come forward and just, if you would just give us your name. Welcome.
Hi there. I'm Susan Randolph. I live in Jefferson City on Del Cero. And I would like to echo Jan's request to remove that phrase to make it historically accurate. That is a myth that Sterling Price did not attack the city due to his affection. No one knows what he was thinking that day. And that myth got started with the presentation and dedication of the UDC marker, the United Daughters of the Confederacy marker, back in the early nineteen thirties. And they stated during the dedication, they really didn't know why Sterling Price didn't attack the city. And part of the presentation was, while many reasons have been advanced as to why Price passed up Jefferson City, it is believed that the real reason for his decision was his love for the city and his affection for its citizens with whom he had spent four of the happiest years of his life as governor of the state. So that's where the myth began, and that's part of the lost cause effort by the United Daughters of the Confederacy to glorify the efforts of Confederates and Confederate generals. And the lost cause mythology also justified segregation, slavery, Jim Crow laws. And I struggled with this decision. I know everybody wants to move past this issue with the markers and pavers and all that. But I just feel like to not speak up is to be complicit with the lost cause mythology of glorifying the efforts of the Confederacy. And I really appreciate the efforts this, I wanted to love this resolution. And I love every part of it except that one little phrase. And I agree with Jan. It's not actually accurate. And if you're going to have a historical statement, resolution, it should be accurate. So I appreciate all your efforts and...
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Do you have a copy of Ms. Schumaker's handout in front of you? Or do you have a copy of the language talking about?
Let's see. Yes, I do have Jan's handout.
Do you, do you read the, the language that she has marked out as, as being cited as the cause for his decision within this resolution? Because I have to tell you, the immediately succeeding language makes quite clear that the position of this resolution is that by all historical accounts, he decided that the city was too well defended to attack and on October seventh, eighteen sixty-four, abandoned his mission to take the capital city, et cetera.
Yeah, and when I read that, I didn't know what that phrase, by all historical accounts, was describing. Was it his affection for the city? Or was it he decided not to attack Jefferson City?
Oh, I mean, I think it's set off by the comma that proceeds by all historical...
Well, there's two commas.
Oh, I see what you mean.
If, if it said something along the signs, but history indicates he decided not to...
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay, it's being, the term before rather than the term. It was certainly intended to apply to the term after.
Yeah, I, I got that. I understood that that phrase was put in there. I just think the resolution could be just a tiny bit clearer that the historical evidence indicates that he decided not to attack because the city was so well defended.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All righty. But thank you for your time in considering that tweak to the resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Hensley?
I'd make a motion at this point that we amend the resolution according to these suggestions.
So we have a motion and a second to amend. We also have a little bit more public input. I see another hand, but we have the motion and second. So why don't we, we'll hold that thought and then we'll have Ms. Coleman. Or if you would state your name and welcome. Thank you.
I'm Jackie Coleman, twenty fifty Trenton Court. I commend the council for wanting to appease with the resolution of the issue. I think it is important to put it behind us. But if I would want to recommend a resolution on Black Lives Matters or slavery, would you consider that? You know, we had an issue that we need to put to bed. And with this resolution, it will be put to bed. What the reality is, is an appeasement to me. And to me, to bring a pluck out a piece of history and then decide we've got to put all a resolution around it, you're opening up a can of worms. There'll be other resolutions and other pieces of history that you might be asked to attend to. It's just sad that we have to end up this way on such a personal issue because people did not have their way and they want a lawsuit. And I'm just surprised a governmental body would take the time to appease. It's been resolved. But if you want to do that, I commend you for your work. And I think the changes in the resolution are appropriate. Judge Judy would not have allowed assumption to be made. But I commend you for being volunteered, being elected. But I really think it's an appeasement attempt. And I wasn't going to say anything tonight. I was just going to come here. But if it makes you feel good to appease something, then so be it. I feel sorry that you'd have to do that. And I put this baby to bed.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. And if we've covered everybody who wants to come speak and making sure there wasn't anyone online that I missed. So we have a... Councilman Hensley?
It's, it's to amend the fifth bullet point on the first page pursuant to the bold language in Ms. Schumaker's handout.
Can we have a motion and second for that? So any further discussion on amending this resolution on the amendment? So we will vote on the amendment, then we will take up the resolution. So at this point...
What was the amendment? I'm sorry. I was composing myself after Ms. Coleman's comment, which I appreciate. Thank you.
I believe it's what's in bold print here under item, the fifth bullet point.
Striking all of that or adding but by? Just striking it all, the assumption part?
To amend it exactly as it's proposed.
Like striking all of it. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
And I apologize for the drafting oversight. It was, it was clear to me in my head and when I read it, but I appreciate that there are two ways to read things sometimes. And I certainly did not intend the other meaning. Thank you.
So let's take up the amendment. So any further discussion on that? Roll call on accepting the amendment.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Deacon? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
So the amendment has passed, so we'll take up resolution twenty twenty-two oh-three as amendment, as amended. Any further discussion on the amended resolution? I was going to, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I will just point out that the, I think the main source that was used for, for much of the new language was this booklet that H CJ put out eight years ago for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the event. Devoted, you know, this, this whole deal to this particular event. And it's, it's a remarkably clear read. And it was produced with the help of David Lineberry, historian. And I just, it actually happened to be in a bookshelf in the house that we moved into two years ago. It was very strange coincidence, but anyhow. But I just wanted everyone to, to know the, the source of the additional context that was provided here. And I appreciate Councilman Spencer entertaining these proposed changes.
Thank you. And is there a motion to take up twenty twenty-two, three as amended?
Still moved.
Second.
So now we're taking that up as amended. Any further discussion or questions? And before we do roll call, I know, I guess, Councilman Spencer bringing it forward. And I know I was kind of reading it and trying to figure out why. I know that you weren't on the council when council had decided to do the action on, on the Rock. And so I just wasn't sure what, what the significance of the, the actual resolution is. Just trying to see what the, the point of having it.
I think, as I stated earlier, it's just an opportunity for us as a council to try to address an issue that was somewhat divisive in our community. And I think it has an opportunity to heal the community and move it forward past this issue, so.
I was just trying to figure out what the purpose really was. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Deacon? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item sixteen, presentations. And now we would like to invite Gail Danfill to come forward. Thank, Daniel, I'm sorry. And thank you for your patience there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you mind if I approach?
Sure, we can pass this around. Give me to pass those to everybody. Sure.
The opiate crisis that you spoke of, that you all have worked on. My daughter died during that opiate crisis. She died over five years ago, December fourteenth. It was five years. And SAVE was birthed the night of my daughter's death. And SAVE is a heroin awareness and prevention ministry. And we go to schools. We built a sober living home on our property for women in recovery from drug addiction. We put on annual seminars. And excuse me for my speech. I've recently gotten braces, and I'm still struggling with working through, communicating through them. We're putting on our sixth annual seminar this year at the state capitol on the first floor rotunda. And I would like to welcome all of you to come and support the community. Although there's some advancements, it is still the leading cause of accidental death in our country, in our communities. And we're not, we're not getting very far in this. And I believe that education, I believe that awareness and prevention is the answer. That's why SAVE is a heroin awareness and prevention ministry. We've got some incredible speakers this year. I know that Eric Schmidt just recently won a three hundred and fifty-eight million dollar lawsuit against Johnson and Johnson. And over the next several years, we'll be donating that money out to different causes to help with the opiate crisis. This is a fentanyl awareness and prevention seminar. We've in the past done heroin, but fentanyl is just, it's taken over. And I invite you all to come. Mayor, I invite you to come, and I think we're going to have an incredible seminar. And spread the word. I don't know if you all can put this on your Facebook page, if you all have a Facebook page. I know that Eric Hoy, the chief of the emergency medical services, is going to be one of our speakers. Somebody from the attorney general's office is going to be representing the attorney general office. Any, any questions?
Thank you for that. Any questions of council? Councilman Spencer?
First, sorry for your loss.
Thank you so much.
It's, it's something I, I appreciate your willingness to, to be grassroots and really try to bring to the forefront, not only with us, but the state as well. So I commend you on your efforts, and again, sorry for your loss.
Thank you so much. And it is grassroots. I believe that the answer to this, this epidemic, this crisis that we are in, I believe that it starts with community. I believe it starts at home, building stronger families, building stronger communities, building stronger schools. And I, I believe that that is, that's the only answer. Our, our communities, our homes are broken. And these children are coming from broken homes, and a lot of them are turning to drugs. My daughter came from a broken home. And if I could go back and fix that, if I could go back and strengthen that, if I had the tools to, to strengthen, if I, if I would have known them what I would know now, I would have worked harder to, to make my, 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 my marriage work. It hurts to come in from a broken home and a family. And I think that our communities need, need help in that area as well. So thank you. This is a grassroots effort.
Thank you. I appreciate. I would echo Councilman Spencer's comments and appreciate you advocating and coming forward. And thank you for being here tonight and waiting through the, the meeting to present this to us.
My pleasure, my honor. Thank you all.
And I noticed we also have Eric, Chief Hoy, our EMS director. Looks like he will be speaking. We work very closely with him. I'm actually out that day, so I would maybe mention, I don't know if our pro temp is available being a Saturday, what your plans are, but I, maybe somebody from the council or city would be able to represent. So we'll, we'll check our calendars.
Much welcomed.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to echo Councilman Spencer's comments. Thank you for being here. In my other job, I run the Missouri Pharmacy Association. So we have been involved in these issues for the last fifteen years at least. We work very closely with law enforcement first on the pseudo-federal issue, trying to shut down that avenue. And we were seeing meth clinics blow up around the state. Worked with our pharmacists, worked with law enforcement. And then last ten years, been working on prescription drug monitoring programs. And then last 10 years, been working on prescription drug monitoring program. Another name that I would give you, and I certainly don't want to get in her calendar, but Senator Holly Thompson-Rader has been a huge advocate in the state of Missouri. Worked like a bulldog for eight years in the House, trying to pass prescription drug monitoring, finally got it done when she got over to the Senate side. She too had a daughter that, that got hooked. Fortunately, she has recovered and is kind of out now, you know, talking to other youth. But I appreciate the work, work that you're doing. It's grassroots is how we're going to solve this. And then once we get the grassroots, we can get the professionals involved. So thank you very much for your work.
You're so welcome. And I don't know anybody who's not affected by it. Somebody, you know, everybody knows somebody who's been affected by this. And, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of fentanyl and methamphetamine now too. There's a lot of overdoses and deaths and, you know, people that are using methamphetamine. It's not just the heroin addicts. Fentanyl has made its way here. And, um, I just met a mother, um, two weeks ago that will actually be at the seminar and her son was, um, an, an opiate addict. And he was in recovery and he had some dental work done and they had prescribed Percocet. And, um, he ran out, of course, and went to the streets, which, you know, that's a lot, that's very familiar. And, um, he got ahold of a pill that had been made on a press machine that was 100% fentanyl and he died thinking that he was buying a Percocet and that, that's common. Um, fentanyl's in everything. And so that's what this seminar is all about, is to try to bring awareness to fentanyl and what all it is in. And, um, because it could be someone, you know, that you would never least expect. Uh, one of the DEA agents that, um, spoke at one of my seminars a year, um, the year before last, talked about the press machine and, and a friend of his actually died of a, a fentanyl overdose. Um, he was thinking that he was buying a Percocet. So it's, it's scary out there. And, um, I really appreciate you, um, y'all listening and, um, spread the word if you would. Um, we're, we've got the Landmark Recovery Center that, which is here in Jefferson City and they're helping a lot of people. They're doing some amazing things through their Celebrate Recovery Program. And I've been coming up here with the Director of the Landmark Recovery Center and, um, kudos to them. Um, they're really trying to do a lot of work here in your all city. So it's, it's a blessing to have the Landmark Recovery Center. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Yes.
What, what age group of people are you seeing go through that recovery? Are you seeing youth or is it mainly adults?
Um, it's, you know, I, I, I believe that the age, um, of the, uh, the overdose death rate, I want to say it's 18 to 35 is the target age. But I've got information on, um, I think it was a couple of months ago, a 12-year-old went into a school, an elementary school and, um, was selling fentanyl. And there was just a ton of overdoses in that elementary school. So it's everywhere.
Another group that might be of assistance to use the Council on Drug-Free Youth here in the community and I know they're very actively working-
Okay, what is that?
Council for Drug-Free Youth.
Council for Drug-Free Youth, okay, okay, I'm going to write that down.
They're, they're in all, most of the schools. I think they're in all the high schools, working with youth on these very issues, in addition to mental health issues.
Okay.
And obviously drug is their primary.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
All right. And, uh, Councilman Spicer?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And, and the people that made up the, um, flyer for me, they, there was a typo on the capital, the little capital and it's like, ugh. But, um, thank you so much for, and if you all would mind, wouldn't mind sharing it on your Facebook page or whatever you have for the city, I, I would appreciate it a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I think Ms. Rogers could probably connect you with Council for Drug-Free Youth as well.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. You're really blessed to have you. You're, you're wonderful. Like of all the places, I, every year that I do the seminar, I go to the city council meetings like a week or two before. And by far, you are just, I mean, wonderful. Your city, I live in, I'm from Phelps County. And so, um, I'm sure everybody, you all know how blessed you are to have her. I was just sat here for a couple hours and, and have seen it. So you are a very lovely lady and your city is very, very blessed to have you. God bless you.
Well, thank you for those nine words. God bless you too. Thank you so much. All right. Item, uh, 16, any other people here to speak on that item? Did I miss anyone? And item 17, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 18, new business. We have Mr. Kroll.
This is an item forwarded to you from the Administration Committee. I believe they wanted to get some input from the city council regarding the proposed scope of an organizational study and the timing. Um, the organizational study, as I understand it, would be, um, engaging a consultant to come and review various operational aspects of the various departments.
So do we need a, uh, are we going to go ahead and approve that here? Do you need a motion to approve that, Mr. Kroll?
I, I think, um, there was to get some direction on the proposed scope and then if, um, council was supportive of that scope as, um, included in your packet, then we would have staff prepare the necessary documents and bring those back to you for approval.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I, I think this is a real opportunity for us to kind of lay out some, some groundwork for how we want to approach government and provide services to our constituents, uh, for the next five, 10, 20 years. Um, it's, it's not a, uh, exercise that I'm, I'm interested in doing is just, you know, checking boxes and having a consultant come in and look over staff's shoulders and, um, watching what, what they do and how they do it. I think this is a real opportunity to get in deep and, and ask some tough questions and be prepared for the tough, tough answers. Also, I think, you know, I, I would like for the council to consider to maybe deviate from the normal, uh, RFP, RFQ structure. And I would encourage, um, us maybe putting a citizens committee together with, uh, citizens of varied expertise, whether that be from government, industry, business, um, public safety, um, those kinds of, those kinds of areas. So, um, I, I'm really vested and committed to this and I would really appreciate, uh, council's support because I think the taxpayers deserve, uh, us doing this exercise.
Thank you, Councilman Spencer. Is that a motion to approve?
I would gladly to frame it in that regard, yes.
Okay. We have a motion and second, any further? Is that the direction that you would like?
Well, I'm, I'm not really sure what we're talking about. It is, are, are you saying have a citizens committee do the work or involved in the proposed scope?
Involved in the proposed scope.
Okay. So, um, so is that the motion then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so to, uh, in developing the scope or do, should it be separate? Go ahead and decide to, the scope and then decide how?
I think the motion is to, um, uh, appoint the citizens committee to review and develop a proposed scope of services for an organizational study. Once that scope is, once that citizens committee has a proposed scope, then I suspect it will either come back to the city council or if you want, administration committee to review that. And then there would be direction on, uh, proceeding through our process, our normal process.
And for Mr. Kroll or Ms. Strope, is that pretty typical to have a citizens committee or is that an extra layer that might make it more complicated? Or is that something that would be more helpful for either one of you?
I don't think it's atypical. I mean, it's, it's, you know, we'd, something similar to what we did for the charter process. So I mean, we'd have to figure out how to get that committee appointed and, and, you know, start those, those meetings. I would say the timing with Evergreen, um, salary study and budget and all of those kinds of things going on is, um, it's going to be a tough time right now to do that, but we certainly can.
Well, and if I may interject, I think that was kind of a little bit of my philosophy in this, is that maybe that could take some of the burden off of city staff to try to develop this citizens group and then kind of let them develop that. And like you said, bring that forward either to the full body of the council or to the appropriate administration committee and then to the full council.
So we have a motion and second. Do we have it clear what it is or should we have Mr., uh, our Councilman Spencer restate it for Ms. Donaldson?
I have it as a motion to appoint a citizens committee to develop a scope of services for an organizational study.
I think that encompasses-
We have a motion and second. Further discussion on the motion, Councilman Hensley and then Fitzwater?
Thank you. Um, do you have a proposal about how we would go about identifying, selecting and recruiting people to serve on this, uh, panel?
Yeah, I could, you know, talk with the administration committee or I could talk directly with Mr. Kroll and, and maybe flesh out some names that, uh, that I, that I've already had discussions with to not speak for them, but so, but to get an idea if they would be willing to serve.
I was thinking more sort of process-wise, um, whether they are selected by a vote of everyone on the council or, or if everyone from the council gets to, uh, you know, tap one person or, or how you, how you're thinking about it?
I, I, what I thought initially was just bring a slate of names and then that way the council could vote, vote on them.
You, you would bring a slate of names?
With, with, with input from other council people. Absolutely.
Ryan, were you?
Yeah, um, section 4.4, 10 of the Charter, um, "The mayor with the advice and consent of the majority of the council shall appoint all members of committees, boards and commissions." Appointments are within the mayor's prerogative. So whatever process we come up with, ultimately, it's the mayor's responsibility to make the appointment and then the city council's responsibility to consent.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I, I guess my comments were along those lines. I mean, we have some amazingly talented people in this community. Guess I was a little cut off guard on this approach to addressing it. I mean, I understand, I mean, we, we've talked a little bit in Public Works about getting some professionals to assist. I am extremely supportive of doing the study. My fear is this process will just delay it versus, I mean, you're, you're comfortable that this is not going to put another level in because myself, I see us as that citizens committee. We've had people tell us that we need to be in these seats and that we ought to be, at least in this timeframe, that citizens committees. I don't know if putting another layer in there helps the process or drags the process. Again, I'm 100% committed and, you know, you and I have talked a number of times. I just, I know we've had discussions on how other groups have been selected. I, I just fear that the process of selection is just going to be an endless, let's make it a little bit better, let's make it a little bit better versus if we do our due diligence as council members, I mean, I'm ready to buck up and spend the time it takes, but I just worry about delaying the processing and getting it off track versus really accomplishing what you want to accomplish, which is take a serious look at the operations and if we can assist and, you know, make it better, do it, but do it with professionals that are, have protections and licensure and liability protection if they steer us in the wrong direction versus an outside group. And again, we've got amazingly talented people in this community. I'm just not sure how you filter them into a legislative process to, to help. I mean, that's just my comments.
And I, I'm open to amending that, that resolution. I just, I want it to be kind of clear that this process will, will not be a fast-paced process. I mean, I think to, to do what I kind of have envisioned, it could, it could be anywhere from a 12 to 16, 18-month process. So, you know, it's, it's something that are, you know, an end product's not going to be, you know, tomorrow. So, um, but if, I'm fine if we want to streamline that. I just was, with the discussions that I've had with, uh, some community members, um, you know, anytime that we can use our ta, uh, talent, local talent, they'd be willing to give of their time and their expertise. I just think that's a, an added line of, of resources that, that we could tap into. But I'm, I'm fine with proceeding through the normal processes, um, as long as we can have an opportunity to, you know, thoroughly vet the RFP, um, process and stand-
Councilman Fitzwater?
Could you reread that section that, that you read?
Sure. "The mayor with the advice and consent of the majority of the council shall appoint all members of committees, boards and commissions."
Given your last comment, do you, do you feel comfortable with that process of, I guess, filtering names through the mayor to select the committee?
I think the mayor would recognize that the talents and the skill set that, that names, that the names that be presented would have.
Councilman Deacon?
It said with advice and consent. So I would assume the council would be actively involved with advising the mayor who should be there and consenting who is on there.
And typically it would go to admin. That's like how our process would work usually. So it could certainly do that again, like the typical, uh, citizens board and committee process? If that's the desire or like Councilman Fitzwater said, if, is it worth, you know, there's some benefits or not and what direction you all would choose to go? Councilman Hensley?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So the motion that is currently on the table is still the one about the, uh, citizen panel? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure.
And I know there was some desire maybe to, maybe amend it and maybe, maybe okay with it. So, uh, any, any direction there? Uh, Councilman Lester, sorry?
I'm just not sure, uh, that type of body would significantly change the scope that we're talking about. I, I certainly see, see that type of body being involved maybe in the process somewhere. I don't know. I just think it might slow down things.
And Councilman Hensley?
And this is a specifics question again, so maybe there's not an answer. How many people are you thinking should be asked to sit on this?
Maybe between five and seven. I guess what, what I was envisioning for the, for the first initial step is that maybe they would be a part of the process of when the vendors come and speak of their qualifications and those kinds of things as well, so.
So any other, we have the motion and second for the current motion. Any desire to amend it or move forward with this? Further discussion? Councilwoman Ward?
Okay. Depending on what the function of this committee is, if it entails the structure of our departments, the numbers of our personnel and how that's going to look like within each department, I don't know, we're just a really small, close-knit community and I just fear of conflict of interest or feeling like you wouldn't want to upset personnel and I, you know, I guess I just fear of a, a fair and impartial judgment, even though, I mean, I'm sure they're professional, but if they work closely with the department in some way in other capacities or no personnel, I, I just think it would be good to have outside. And also, I mean, we have HR that can vet through committee, a committee of city staff or department directors, companies. Um, I think our city staff does a good job vetting our companies we hire now. So that, that's just kind of what I'm thinking. I don't, I don't know if I'm overthinking what this committee's charge is, but, um, that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Councilman Spencer?
And to kind of echo what you're saying, Councilman Ward, is, is that's why I was trying to get an outside perspective of coming in instead of having, uh, normally the staff directors participate in this process, which I think could, could cause some question within the community as well. So that's why I thought, okay, if we- So that's why I thought, okay, if we add a layer of accountability and oversight with, like I say, some professional experts in some related and prospective fields, I thought that would be a good approach to take out any kind of favoritism or concern or anything from city staff when they normally go through these kind of processes. So obviously, the city administrator would be a part of this and he would be the kind of the anchor of city staff representation.
So you were just nominated to do, to be the anchor. So I, I'm just looking between you and Gail with it kind of being a little bit of administration and HR. So I know where that leads this motion, but certainly trying to keep it on track. Any other comments or the current motion, Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, I mean, I'll say, I mean, you know, Councilman Spencer, this has been a driving issue for you your whole time on the council. And I suspect some time before, I can't recall the specifics of the campaign, but I suspect it was probably something you were talking about before you were on the council too. And you've been leading on it, you know, your whole time here. I remain uncertain, to be honest, about what exactly is going to be formed or what would be formed if this passes. I suspect it would work similarly, I think as Mr. Kroll said, to how the Charter Review Commission sort of worked. I don't know that it would be significantly different from how it would work if we just went about it through the normal course. But again, and you know, this has been your issue. I think institutional and organizational efficiency is an important thing in pretty much everywhere. So, you know, you've been driving this, you've got a vision for it. So while I'm still unclear exactly how it's all going to pan out, you know, I think I'm willing in this case to give you what you're asking for.
Okay, so with that, any further discussion? Okay, Councilman Spencer?
This citizens group would not be the one making the determinations of the efficiencies. It's still hiring a third-party group to come in and do the actual study and assessment.
Oh, I get that. I get that.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the current motion? Roll call, please.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Deacon? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 19, motion to approve the April 18, 22 closed session minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 20, closed session. Yes, Councilman Deacon?
Before we go in closed session, I have a question. Pardon me if I'm new to this. There's nothing else to satisfy a number of my constituents. Where are we on the process with the new committee for the hiring of the police chief? Hopefully, we would have input from the council and also from maybe even the approval from the council. There were, at least from what I've been hearing, I wasn't ready to the original council committee, but there's a huge amount of talent in law enforcement retired and that were left off. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of talent we could have on there that really, this is truly the most important thing we're going to do, I think, on the council, at least probably for the next 20 years. This will set the temper of how our community is run. It can fall apart like Columbia did within a year. It'll take your hands off or it can be a terrible heckhole like it was in Ferguson when you get so much restriction and so much law enforcement, it goes bad on the other side. So I think it is paramount that the council have more input on the next committee. I just wondered when that was so we could kind of get organized.
Mr. Kroll?
So this charter says city administrator will make a recommendation to the city council and city council for their approval. So city council is absolutely involved in the process. As I've said to council before, we're, I've got a group of which you have all advised that is going through the process of an initial interview. And then from that process, it'll dictate a second interview process. There are some elected officials that'll be involved in that second interview process as there have been for every other department director that I have brought forth to the city council for consideration.
This isn't every other director. This one is so important that we really have to get this one right.
I understand that. I probably hired and fired more police chiefs than anybody in the city, if not in the state. I get it. The recommendations will come to the city council. So does that answer the question?
Will we have, will we just going to be handed two people or one person or will we have a vetting process that the council is part of? Or at least the council had input on who is part of the vetting process? I'm just confused. I've been this, I've watched this town. We've had good ones, we've had bad ones. So, and we've, I just want to make sure we get the good one. And I'm not overly comfortable with the committee you have now.
Do you, who on the committee are you? I mean, what about the committee?
I have a, anyone that's employed by the city. I think that's a conflict. I think with the city attorney being right there with the police chief, it could set a precedent, not maybe now, everything's up and aboard, but in the years to come, you get too familiar. There should be, the city councillor interprets the law, the law enforcement enforces the law. They should be, should be arms-length. The HR is fine, but what does she know about the law enforcement, the temper of the community and with the rank and file? I can give you some suggestions in open. I haven't talked to, I know one person would have started on there. He was a glaring omission. He'd been working with the municipal court for quite a few years. He really understands what's going on. And Shelton Lineback, he's got a lot of people from the sheriff's association for there that could have been, could have been helpful. I understand the police on there. It's interesting that only, it's the only military organization I've seen where subordinate helps elect his captain. I mean, but I understand the turnover of police being on there and I understand all that. It just, you knew the process and being long-lived in the public, I've talked to a lot of people and I've just got, they wanted me to answer their questions. And so they're wondering about the second committee and those are the same concerns with not as many police people on there as they thought coming from law enforcement.
Yeah. The first committee, in my view, helped to identify the capability, kind of the skills of the different applicants. The second committee will be looking at the fit. But I can't predetermine the second committee until the first committee has done their job. There are more technical kind of people on that committee. Certainly, there could have been a lot more people on the committee, but, you know, I needed to have a number. The people on the committee are people that I have chosen because of, I value their input. And the recommendation that I make to the council, I can't predetermine what that is. Council can do whatever they want to after that recommendation. They can invite all the candidates back in, they can interview them all, they can do whatever they want to do. But the charter says I need to make that recommendation to the city council and that's what I intend to do. The, I've spoken to some people about the second committee, but I can't really finalize that till I know what the first committee's going to do.
Are you open to recommendations for the second committee?
Sure.
I also was confused why United Way was there. I mean, they give, they lobby for money and they give it away. And the Downtown Association, if we were a big city, I could understand the downtown being involved, but those two, I just thought were just kind of maybe tangentially to through the process, but not really the nuts and bolts of what we need. That was my opinion.
Well, two things. One, I value both of their opinions. Two, they've been involved in a process, including hiring of a city administrator. I think they got that one right last time. And the other is United Way deals with almost every organization in the community. And I think it's important for a police chief to understand that collaboration with those other organizations and to be engaged with the community and get out in those, have some least involvement with those organizations. So United Way absolutely, I think, has a fair impact on overall policing and law enforcement in the city. Downtown Association, we have a police officer that attends every one of those Downtown Association meetings. I think the downtown is a very important part of the community and the organization. And so trying to have some input and some diversity and thought and thinking, I think, is important. We have, you know, a mix of different kinds of law enforcement personnel and community members on that. So that was my thinking.
Thank you, Councilman Deacon. Anything else before we go into closed session? Right, item 20 pursuant to section 610.021 of the revised statute of Missouri, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following: Attorney-client privileged communications, section 610.0211, preparations for negotiations with employee group 610.021 point, or nine, sealed, oh my gosh, I can't read this, bids and proposals related to negotiated contracts 610.02112. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Deacon? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. So we will.